Father Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to still be here and to still do that into which we were chosen. Father, we ask that you be with the court and that you be with the decisions that it makes today to be into your will and not our own. And Father, we ask that you be with those that are out there that are still hurting and still concerned. Father, we pray that you'll be with them, that you'll bless them, and you'll bless this county and keep us from harm. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. It is 9:02 Tuesday morning, May the 5th. We do have a quorum, so we will call the meeting to order. First item, first is citizens' comments, of which we have none today. Item number one is consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners' Court on April 28, 2020. Are there any comments, additions, or deletions?
Hearing none, Judge, I move that we approve the minutes from the previously held meeting of Commissioners' Court on April 28, 2020, as presented.
I'll second Judge.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor? Item passes. Item number two is consider and take action to proclaim May of 2020 as Elder Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. And gentlemen, this is something that we do every year, proclamation of trying to bring awareness to this issue in our community. And the proclamation reads as, whereas people who are elderly and have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of Henderson County by helping to preserve customs, convictions, and traditions of many people from diverse backgrounds, and whereas these residents are vital and integral members of our society, and their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives, and whereas abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the entire country, and whereas Texas APS in-home caseworkers in Henderson County have completed 478 investigations, of which 234 cases of abuse, neglect, and/or exploitation were confirmed against our elderly Texans or those with disabilities in 2019. Whereas elder abuse is grossly underreported because the elderly who are being abused find it very difficult to tell anyone or are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid. Whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, all cultural and ethnic groups, whether they are in good health or incapacitated in some way, in poor neighborhoods and in suburbia, and whereas many of these cases investigated by Adult Protective Services in Texas involve self-neglect, and it is our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need. Now therefore, the Henderson County Commissioners' Court does hereby proclaim the month of May 2020 to be Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Henderson County and urges all citizens to work together to reduce abuse and neglect of people who are elderly or have disabilities. Gentlemen, normal conditions, we would have our advocacy groups here with us today. Given our circumstances, they cannot be with us, but I think that, and I speak for everyone when I say, our appreciation to those organizations is heartfelt. Does anyone have any comments?
You know, Judge, we talk about during this virus, the coronavirus, that we need to be helping our neighbors and our friends and our family, and we should be helping the elderly at all times, not just during this pan epidemic that we're in. We should be actually checking on our neighbors that we know that are older and may need some help. So I think it's a good time for us to be aware of that and reach out at this time, not only, like I said, during this time, but all the time. But thank you, Judge, for letting me.
You bet. Gentlemen?
I'll just kind of mimic what he said, but all of the volunteers and the Adult Protective Services people that have to deal with the cases every year in Henderson County, you know, our hats are off to those people that help take care of the elderly on a daily basis.
Commissioner?
I just think it puts in perspective some of the things that we're going through right now. Whenever you think about it, it's a small part of life in Henderson County. When you have 234 cases of elderly abuse, that's terrible. And I think this is a good opportunity for us to make a proclamation to at least bring this out in front of people and say, you know, this is something we've got to look for and something that we've got to put an end to.
I'd like to say this one case of elderly abuse is too many. And I agree with Commissioner Thomas, we need to be aware of the elderly and help them in any way we can. Saying that, I'd like to proclaim May 2020 as Elder Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and I make that a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Cheney, second by Commissioner McCam, to proclaim May of 2020 Elder Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. Any further discussion? I will add, gentlemen, and for the public, that they'll be seeing some pinwheels on the yard, I believe, this week or next week, for one week, as a part of this proclamation and declaration process. So with that, all in favor of the motion? Item number three is consider and take action on resolution in support of the Habitat for Humanities of Smith County. Gentlemen, last year, Habitat for the Humanities of Smith County approached the court asking a resolution of support coming from the Commissioners' Court so that Henderson County could be added into their programs. We did do this. The time that this information came to us was right at the beginning of the current situation that we're in and have not been able to get the stats from last year, if they were successful with any programs. And they're asking again this year that we lend our support. If you will, I'll read the resolution if you would like me to. This resolution says, whereas Henderson County's most recent population estimate from the United States Census Bureau is projected to be 82,737, whereas census statistics project that 21.9% of the Henderson County's estimated population is age 65 or older. And whereas census statistics further project that of the Henderson County population who are over age 65 is 9.1% of that number fall below the poverty level. Whereas Henderson County Commissioners' Court is concerned about its citizens living in unsafe and unhealthy conditions, and whereas Habitat for Humanities of Smith County strives to create community stability through critical home repair for low-to-modern-income families. Whereas Henderson County Commissioners' Court and Habitat for Humanities of Smith County agree that a home that creates health and/or safety issues for the homeowner is a home that is in need of critical home repair. And whereas Habitat for Humanities of Smith County is capable and willing to provide services within Henderson County to address these concerns. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Henderson County, Texas, through adoption of this resolution, supports Habitat for Humanity of Smith County in its efforts for applying for a Affordable Housing Program grant through the Federal Home Loan Bank of Dallas, which will support our community revitalization efforts. Gentlemen, are there any comments?
Any other counties involved besides Smith County, Judge, do you know?
My understanding is, I believe Wood County is involved with the Smith County, and I'm not sure, there's one other, but I can't call the name of it.
Just curious.
This is a part of their, if they can be successful in their application for this program, it's to bring resources to help meet this need. Any other comments? Entertained a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Judge? Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the resolution in support of Habitat for Humanity of Smith County. All those in favor? Item number four, consider and take action to accept a $500 donation from the Friends of the Library and a $500 donation from the Public Library Fund in honor of Precinct Four Commissioner Ken Geisler.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't need to tell you all that Commissioner Geisler was a great advocate for the library. He was instrumental in Henderson County Library finally achieving state accreditation after 95 years. You may not know how helpful Commissioner Geisler was to the library. When I was new to Henderson County, I was lucky enough to be welcomed into his office in Precinct Four, and he would thoughtfully answer my questions and patiently explain his philosophy of government to me. Those conversations were like private tutoring sessions, and I am grateful for them. I know he was just as accessible to Rachel before me. In honor of Commissioner Geisler's commitment to the library and the librarians, the Public Library Fund and the Friends of the Library would each like to donate $500 in his memory.
With us today, we have Mrs. Geisler, our dear friend, and we know how much the library meant to Ken and yourself, and we're honored here today to have you here with us. So, gentlemen, do you have any comments?
Yeah, we know, of course, I sat on the court with Ken for several years, and he loved, he did love the library for many years, and loved the Ken also. Ken deeply missed on this court, but the library is a special place, and it will be. The memories that, and I remember a lot of times at Budget, we were talking, and he would fight for the library always, and as other organizations, but a very nice honor, and thank you for presenting this today in memory.
I have to say the same thing. When I got on the court, I was really thinking that I could learn a lot from what he did from the government and the county government from him, but his heart and soul was with the library and the books. And I think Commissioner Thomas and I had walked through the library, and I said, man, I haven't been in one of these since maybe high school. So anyway, it was great.
Need to go more, you need to go more.
So the dedication he had for our library and all the things that he did for the county library is a great thing, so we appreciate it, what he had done.
Commissioner?
I had the opportunity in three years to ride with Ken a couple of times to conferences, and no matter what we were discussing, it always came back to the library at some point. And Ken thought knowledge was a special thing, and he always made it part of his agenda to make sure that the library was taken care of and that people had a place to go to gain that knowledge. So we thank y'all for what y'all are doing, the donations.
You know, it's just an honor for me to sit here in Ken's chair, because I know he loved the county, and I know he loved the library. And I just don't feel like I can even sit in his chair. He was a special individual, he was a great man, and he loved the county very much. Saying that, I'd like to make a motion to accept the $500. Were we doing these two separate?
No, we'll do them in one motion, but if I can say one thing, he fought just as hard for the library as he did for every cent he could get for Roden Bridge. And that is one of those, keeping that even focus was what was so unique about it going to, the library was just as important, so.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a $500 donation from Friends of the Library and $500 donation from the Public Library Fund in honor of Precinct Four Commissioner Ken Geisler.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Cheney, second by Commissioner McCam, to accept the $500 donations from both the Friends of the Library and the Public Library Fund in honor of Precinct Four Commissioner Ken Geisler. All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
And Catherine, thank you. Item number five, consider and take action to apply for the County Transportation Infrastructure Funding Grant. Ms. Brown?
Yes, this is the funding that is being provided for eligible counties for transportation infrastructure projects located in areas that are affected by oil and gas production. We have created our prioritization list, and now I've put the application together. Our total requested grant with the projects that we prioritize is $2,208,500. So that's what we will be applying for, and we will find out what we're actually awarded in June.
But we are rather certain of the minimum award, which is, what, $184? Questions?
That's minimum.
There will be an opportunity, once the award is made, for the court to then, if it chooses to, to reprioritize based off of that list?
Yes, and that includes removing or adding, if things have changed within the months of waiting to be awarded.
And when is the award?
They said around June 25th is what we're receiving, so it will be late summer.
I thought it was June 1st?
No, it's the end. June 25th is the date they gave. I hope they're able to stick real tight to that, but they were clear that this is, they're wanting to.
And so with that being said, of a June 25 deadline or release, that takes one of mine, my top's already off, and so we're going to be able to add something else to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, we will be able to remove and add anything that's needed once awarded before we request.
But you can't buy it before, I mean, if you bought the material before June 25th, you can't apply it to this.
Correct.
Okay.
Entertained a motion?
You know, we had a similar fund we got a few years ago, Catherine. Commissioner Geisler and I were on the court, and we applied for this along with, at that time, Commissioner McKinney, and we did get some money that we were able to fix some roads with, that came in really handy. And Commissioner Geisler, again, had a big part in retrieving that money and filling out the applications properly. Him and I both spent a lot of time with that, and those memories will also continue because it's a similar grant that we're asking for today, and it's much needed. Whatever we get, it'll definitely help, so. Thank you, Jessica, for all your work you've done.
Any other comments? Entertained a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve and get the grant for the County Transportation Infrastructure Funding Grant approved or sent in for approval, for the judge's authorization to sign.
I'll second. Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Cheney, to approve the application for the County Transportation Infrastructure Fund Grant Program 2020. All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you.
Pardon? Item six, receive financial reports. Gentlemen, let me back up, we have reports from all five of our JPs, and those will be available for viewing after court. Let me scroll down. Item number seven is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets. Gentlemen, first one is the payroll disbursement for bi-weekly number nine that we have before us today for approval. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, entertained a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept bi-weekly number nine payroll disbursement.
I'll second. Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Cheney, to approve the payroll disbursements for bi-weekly number nine. All those in favor? Item passes. The second one we have is the accounts cash sheet ending March of 2020. Any questions or comments? Entertained a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the accounts cash sheet for the period ending March of 2020. All those in favor? Item passes. Item eight is consider and take action on submitted contracts, which we have none. Item number nine is consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits, and we have one in Precinct Three.
Yes, Commissioners, I have one. Bethel Ash Water Supply Company for a road board under 5901 County Road 3911, and this will be private to private.
Questions? Entertained?
None, I move that we accept or grant the right-of-way to Bethel Ash Water Supply Company for a road board at 5901 County Road 3911.
Your all?
With my all possession to sign.
I'll second that. Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Cheney, to approve the proposed utility line activity agreement with Bethel Ash Water Supply Corporation for County Road 3911, with the Commissioners' Authorization to sign. All those in favor? Item 10, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Ms. Lee?
This is hopefully the last 2019, I say it's just cleaned up in our building, making here a downhill road, just the final.
Questions for Ms. Lee?
No questions.
Entertained a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
2019.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cheney, second by Commissioner Tulley, to approve, hopefully the final 2019 budget amendments. All those in favor? Item passes. Item number 11, consider, excuse me, consider and take action on payment of bills.
Bills this week for 2020 total $177,007.24.
Commissioner Thomas, questions?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tulley?
I had mine answered Friday.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Oh, sorry. Good deal. I did want to point out, and we're into the fifth month, I guess, of operations of our CPS court, and you will notice that our budget is running long, I guess you are, short in that court-appointed process, which we hadn't thought that it would be due to the number of cases that are moving faster. So that's one item we'll have to look to during budget hearings. Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to approve $177,007.24.
I'll second, Judge.
Motion made by Commissioner Cheney, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the fiscal year 2020 bills in the amount of $177,007.24. All those in favor? Item number 12, consider and take action on submitted plats.
We have two in Precinct One and one in Precinct Three, and all these are paid.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah, let me sign this last one here. While I'm in the rhythm. I am above the 65 group now.
Duly noted.
I don't know if you knew that or not. I think the census said 21% of populations in the 65 and over group, and I'm definitely there.
Just comment. I guess I'll start with, I got a final plat.
Judge, it's in the Tool area. It's a subdivision, it's a final for the subdivision for Thurman Estates. You want to look through it there. Hand me that. Court, this is Thurman Estates in the Tool area. It is a subdivision, they did a preliminary last year, he's come in now and finished up his road and basically did everything that we've asked him to do in this subdivision, and all the, I believe all the needed stamps are there, and all the fees are paid, I think. Mayor Margaret, yeah, all of them are paid up to date, and I'd like to get this subdivision approved for final, so he can go ahead and start selling lots at this location.
Questions for Commissioner Thomas?
Okay, Judge, if there's not any questions, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the final plat, and that would be for Thurman Estates, number two, located in the Tool area for filing purposes only.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the Thurman Estates, number two, final plat for filing purposes only. All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you, Court. And I got another one, and it is, it's a replat, it's in the Seven Points area, Sanctuary off of Cedar Creek Lake, and this one is cleaning up some lot lines, I think lots 2A through 13A. You want me to move them down this way, too? I got, do you want to see?
You want to see?
Oh, no. And this one, like I said, it's not a, it's a replat, it's a subdivision that's been there for a while. He's cleaning up some lot lines for storage buildings, gardens, different things in the, in this subdivision, and all the signatures are there, all the stamps, everything, the fees paid on this one, too. So I'd like to present it as a final replat for, and that one called is Sanctuary, is what it's called.
Questions for the Commissioner?
No, sir.
Entertained a motion?
Okay, Judge, same deal, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this replat at, called the Sanctuary of Cedar Creek Lake, located in, out of Seven Points, for filing purposes only.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the replat for Sanctuary of Cedar Creek Lake for filing purposes only. All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you. Commissioner?
I had a question from a couple of Commissioners on the court.
I had a, uh, question from a couple of Commissioners on the court about, uh, the plat, so, uh, that I couldn't answer, so I'm gonna have to get with the property owner.
Okay.
I'd like to hold this off until later time.
Okay. That's all of the plats, Mayor Margaret?
Yes, sir.
All right. Item 13, open and consider bids, and we have none. Item 14, consider and take action to adjourn.
I'd like to say, before we do that, I'd like to say it's good to have Catherine Geisler here, I know she's going through some hard times, and I just want you to know that we're praying for her. Another thing is, in Precinct Four, we have a, we have a, uh, school that was named the state champions in basketball, the corner.
Hey, game.
I just want you to know, we're proud of the Flyers.
There you go.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
I'd like to say one, uh, thing, uh, just to keep it on everybody's mind, I know it is, but, uh, as the governor relaxes some of the restrictions, uh, still keep in mind that, uh, you need to take precautions about your health.
Yeah.
Social distancing is still important.
Exactly.
Clean, keeping a clean hygiene, so, uh, as we relax, hopefully relax some of the things that have been ordered, uh, still pay attention to your health.
Well said.
So moved.
One thing I'd like to mention is our, our, uh, we all got recycling facilities and dumps that are, at our precincts, and we're getting snowed under, the people are staying at home and they're social distancing, and they're cleaning out their storage building, their garages and carports, and everybody else's too, seems like, so we're getting, really getting hammered at those facilities, and, and, and which is a good thing, we can handle it, but it has been pretty overwhelming, uh, and we're also having some illegal dumps in Precinct One, I know I'm keeping our fire marshals, uh, pretty busy trying to track those down, so I'd like to say that the people that, you know, do not dump on our county roads, if you, you know, we'll take it at our precincts, we'll, we'll, we'll make a good deal for you, but do not dump it on our county roads, I, it has been ridiculous how many, how many I've had in Precinct One, I know seven to 10 in the last couple of weeks that we're having to send the fire marshal out and their crew to go out and look through this trash, and then Precinct One employees gets to go out there and pick it up and, and dispose of it properly, so I'm very disappointed, it's some aspects of this that people are deciding that's okay to dump on a county road, we have a boat on, on, on one of my roads right now, they decided to empty their boat, and with some trash in it, and a lot of trash, so, uh, just to, uh, for the people, the audience that are watching, uh, uh, we're, we're watching for you, and, and I hope we catch you if you're dumping on our county road, that is really, uh, it's ridiculous that we have to do that, but thank you for the ones that do come to the dump, but we, we are accepting a lot of trash, and I know we're all are, we've talked about, all four of the Commissioners have talked about how much, uh, waste is coming in, so that means people are at home and they're doing these type activities, but, but please do not throw it on the county roads. Thank you.
Do we have a second? To Mr. Tulley, Commissioner Tulley's motion?
One more time.
So moved.
Second.
There we go. Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to adjourn. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you very much for being with us.